Committee meeting for Monday, May 17th, 2021 to order. The committee has a couple items of general business before we get to the posted hearing. The first item...
Recording next or no?
Just a hearing, just a hearing, thank you. So, the first item of business on our agenda tonight is to consider a request for an outdoor fundraiser for the Humane Society on Saturday, May 22nd, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the petitioner is the Aftershock Bar and Grill at 1418 Leonard Street. Do we have a representative with us from Aftershock?
Yes.
Come on up and, I guess, just walk the committee through your event from the microphone here? Nope, around the...
There in the corner.
Right in between the two attorneys, right there.
Okay.
So, I guess, talk to us about your event. We received the diagram that you've drawn of the site.
Yep. Did you see, did you receive the flyer as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That's in the meeting packets as well.
Okay. Yeah, so, basically, this diagram here that we're going to put some orange fencing on the right of the outside deck, there's an outside deck that has like a outdoor patio that opens up, so we're going to kind of close it off to just basically the outside deck and that back end of the parking lot, just to keep it contained with... They are able to kind of bring their dogs, so we'd like to keep them in that outside area, and then they're not allowed to go in the...
So, that back fenced-in deck area that is always on your premises?
Right.
That is fenced, and is that posted as part of your licensed premise?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that is part of your normal alcohol service area. As part of this, are you also requesting alcohol service in the area that you have delineated on the parking lot?
Preferably, yes, just because if they go, I'm going to be having a food tent set up, or, you know, just like a table, and we're grilling out brats and burgers, so then they can kind of walk through and purchase a hamburger and chips. All the money is going to the Humane Society, so we've got all that food donated, so just so they can kind of walk through and not have a issue of, you know, any problems, basically.
Okay. I will tell you that I have heard from a number of residents that have concerns about the event, but I will also tell you that I have concerns about enlarging the size of your serving premise. You already have the main floor bar area, you've got a large banquet facility in the back, and this fenced area that's outdoors.
Mm-hmm.
And I think to allow more open intoxicants out into that area in the parking lot expands that service area exponentially, and, you know, we have had, I'm sure you're well aware, we've had a volume of complaints.
Right.
From, you know, within the neighborhood, and so what we've had there, the history has included complaints about open intoxicants outside on a normal day, over-serving, disorderly conduct by patrons, littering, and antagonistic behavior toward the neighbors by your patrons. And so, we, I have some serious concerns about making that premise any bigger than it already is for outdoor alcohol.
Right, and really, the main, the main reason why I kind of decided to do this, I don't want them congregating outside, that's not like the purpose of it, I don't want them congregating in the fenced-in area drinking. I want to contain them into the fenced area, deck of the banquet hall, that area in the bar, but it was just kind of like for that reason that I have, and getting so many complaints that, you know, I don't, if somebody walks out to get a burger and they have a beer in their hand, I just don't want some, kind of a big issue brought up, and that's basically, I don't want them congregating, I'm not going to have them be like, hey, you know, this is where the party's at, no. I just want, don't want anybody to get in trouble, or myself get in trouble, just by them having a beer in their hand and grabbing the burger and the brat, or if there's animals out there in this area, kind of keep them in that area, so if there is a lot of dogs that come, that they have a little bit of a space to roam in and not, you know, have the customers be worried about.
How, how have you addressed the parking situation?
As far as...
I mean, if you're going to use part of your parking area for this expansion, where are your patrons going to park?
Well, well, they'll pick, this is only just like a small portion, it's really kind of like by the back deck area, and it might even be a little bit smaller, this looks like a larger amount that I really would like, that I would really essentially put up, but they would be parking, there'd be like probably four spots to the left prior to the fenced-in area, four spots to the right, the full parking lot up front, and then street parking as well.
Street parking on Leonard?
Yeah, that's usually...
That's, and that's been a concern. I will tell you that I had four calls yesterday about this event.
Yep.
There's, because all of the things that have happened historically, that have caused additional patrols and things to be going on near your establishment?
Mm-hmm.
That situation, there's a toxic situation between you and the neighborhood, or between your bar and the neighborhood, and, you know, they're concerned. Luckily, this event doesn't occur at night.
Right.
But already, there's concern about making that alcohol premise any bigger and allowing people to consume outdoors, there's concern about noise, there's concern about the volume of music, I heard you were having a DJ?
Yeah, but that's going to be put in the banquet hall, it's not going to be put outside.
Okay.
That's not going to be in the deck area, I mean, it's a two to four timeframe.
Okay.
You know, the drawings are going to be, you know, at 4:30, probably wrapped up by 6:00, and, and that's what I'm trying to do, I don't want to have a problem with the neighborhood, I just, we definitely need to find out and address the issues, because when I'm there, I handle the issues, I don't see the issues, but I'm being told constantly that there is issues.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I'm, I want to get along with the neighbors, I don't want issues, I don't want problems. It seems like in the last year, I've been open for four years now, and it seems in the last year, I've been getting nonstop about every single thing. I mean, I literally have the neighbors doing a watch with binoculars, looking at my business 24 hours a day. That's what I literally watch from my parking lot.
I think the situation has finally boiled over, obviously, between what's been happening there and the residents. Clearly, they were all there first, and so, you know, there's, there's been some tension I'm aware of.
Yeah, the bar has been there for 90 years.
That's right, and, but, under prior ownership, there was no issue between the neighbors and the bar.
Right, because they were always closed.
Well, it was just, it was just a different vibe.
Well, there was issues, because Sue did inform me before I purchased the building that, all the issues that she did, she did have.
Mm-hmm.
And I specifically asked, because, you know, I kind of need to know, I kept everything low-key, I don't do bands, I try to be respectful, I realize it's a residential neighborhood, I didn't come in there like a storm or anything like that, I mean, this is basically just a fundraiser that, this is our second annual one, and I think it's, obviously, for a good cause, it's not meant to be some wild, crazy party event that, you know...
What is your estimated attendance?
Well, that's always hard to say, we did get a lot of donations, so people are looking forward to purchasing, you know, to be able to get tickets, so, I mean, we're hoping, our goal was for $5,000, but, so, we're thinking on and off, people probably walk, you know, we, I do have a lot of neighbors that have dogs, I do have a lot of neighbors that do come, that don't have issues, and so, I'm assuming, well, I mean, we're hoping for 100 people, in and out, you know, nothing, it's hard to kind of say, I don't really know.
Committee members, questions about the event? Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, thank you. See, this is your second annual event?
Yeah.
What kind of layout did you use last time, and how did that work out?
The first one, we really only organized it like three weeks prior to the date, so everything was pretty much in the main bar, and then the banquet hall, so...
So, you weren't outside?
Yeah, not really, because I think it was a little bit earlier, but now it's going to be nicer so they can go outside, because one of my customers, she don't, she, it's kind of like the whole scenario, this is kind of for her, and she got a dog from the Humane Society, so, I mean, last, last year, we raised $888 cash, and then we had just an ostreous amount of supplies that we dropped off to the Humane Society, so, I mean, they're really, they're with us and active with this, we have a lot of communication with them, so they know exactly what's going on, and, you know, our goal is $5,000, and we're hoping to reach that.
Are they on-site with you during the event at all?
Well, we asked them if they, if they wanted to bring, she, they wanted to bring a dog to adopt, we said, if you have a dog to adopt, come on down, she said, maybe, we'll have to see, we'll have to see if there's one that they could bring down, but they said they were going to try to send a representative from them, from there.
Additional, go ahead, Pat.
So, if, on this, in the northwest corner there, with your orange temporary fencing, and you say you want to try to minimize the alcohol in that area?
Yeah.
Are you going to have somebody at the entrance saying, you know, control that?
Yeah, absolutely, because I'll have, you know, I have quite a few volunteers, and then they'll be kind of monitoring that whole outside parking lot area, and then we're going to be grilling out burgers, that's where they're going to set up the burger, the grill and stuff right there, so they're always going to be out there, and, like I said, basically, the only reason I'm kind of doing this is if they walk back and forth, that, you know, I don't want to see anyone get in trouble or have any issues, so I don't want them roaming around with their beers and nothing like that.
And so, and you're also aware that the end time is a firm end time, there's no extension, so...
Yeah, we have to make sure that happens.
Yes, well, absolutely, and, you know, that's, when the committee gives approval for a special event, it starts and ends at the times that we specified on the permit. You know, so if it's running long, expect to, expect to have someone stop by and ask for it to be over.
Right.
Anything else from the committee? Is there a motion to approve the special event?
I would move.
Motion by Peckham, second by McElany. Approve it as drawn, or approve it with a restriction on the outdoor parking lot?
Well, I was, I guess we could have that discussion, I was wondering, from your discussion, Ms. Chair, from your discussion with the neighborhood, do you think that if reduction in size in that overflow area, you think that would help with neighborhood relations?
I think so, because the back area is always there, obviously, they're used to that, and they're used to, in fact, there, many of them have requested that the back area be utilized more, because a lot of the behaviors that are objectionable are happening out in the parking lot, and so, if they were to the back, a lot less of that stuff would be seen, so, the fenced area that's always there hasn't been a problem, it's just that when you make that area bigger and then serve outside in it, you know, that's, that's in full view, so...
So, how about, instead of going out 50 feet, they went out 30 feet?
I mean, I can, I can tighten that down, this is a little bit larger than I really wanted, I can definitely tight that, tighten that down, because there's the, if you see the fence area right there, I'm thinking only like, you know, 20 feet past that fence point, because then that's where I'd set the grill and the tables facing the street, so...
Okay, I think your space will probably get chewed up pretty fast, but I would, I guess, amend my motion or alter my motion to have approval based on the, that overflow area only going out 30 feet, so it'd be 30 feet by 40?
30 feet by 40.
Thank you, you probably use that up if you're going to put tables out there.
Well, I'm going to try not, I'm going to try not to put tables out there, because I don't want congregation, it's just kind of like, hopefully for a walkthrough, and if the dogs need to go around that area, you know, I'm going to try not to, I necessarily don't want to set tables in that area, so the tables are going to probably be more on the deck in the banquet hall, so really, it's kind of a flow-through for the animals, for them to get food, so, I really, that's not my goal, is to have them congregate out there.
Okay, so if it's going to be an annual event, we could try it this way, and then see how it goes, and maybe, who knows, open it up next year.
Okay, okay. Is that agreeable to the second as well?
Yes.
Okay, further discussion? Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Record my vote as no, please, and that will pass four to one. Thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two is discussion and possible action on the issuance of a notice pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1.125.12, Paragraph 3, to Brandonberg's Wagon Wheel Incorporated doing business as Wagon Wheel Supper Club licensee as Gary L. Brandonberg as the agent at 3901 North Sixth Street in Wausau, of the city's intention not to renew its Class B beer and liquor license for failure to open in violation of Municipal Code Section 5.64.160, abandonment of premises, and possible selection of a hearing date. Do we have the license holder with us? Is Gary Brandonberg here this evening? Anyone from Wagon Wheel here with us this evening? Let the record show they did not appear. So, committee, you're aware that we have ordinance that says holders of Class B beer and liquor licenses have to remain open, and if they're closed for a period of more than 30 days, they're obviously then in violation of the abandonment provision, it was learned, I believe it was between our two meetings, between the last meeting and this meeting, that that establishment has not been open for months and months.
For years.
Or, yes, correct, and so, obviously, that license is inactive, and, you know, likely in violation. What is your will? Did you want to move forward with that non-renewal and schedule a hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by McElany to go ahead and schedule a hearing, second by Wadinsky. Further discussion? And we'll go ahead, and we can set that hearing date, do we want to set the hearing date tonight, or do we want to direct staff to draft the appropriate documentation, and then we can set that hearing, we can survey for quorum to set the hearing, if that works?
Sure.
Okay, all right. With that, members in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well, so we'll direct staff to prepare the appropriate documents, and we will survey for quorum to set that hearing based on the mailing requirements of the notice. That brings us to item number three on our agenda, which is a revocation and suspension hearing pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 125.12, Paragraph 2, on a complaint to revoke or suspend the Class B beer and liquor license, license of Timothy A. Naraki, Timothy A. Naraki doing business as Rock's Place at 810 South Third Avenue in Wausau, Wisconsin. At this point, I'll convene the hearing, this is a license hearing pursuant to Section 125.12 of the Wisconsin statutes. A summons and complaint has been filed against Timothy Naraki doing business as Rock's Place. Let it be noted for the record that the following committee members are present, Jim Wadinsky, Don Herbst, Pat Peckham, Becky McElany, and Lisa Rasmussen, along with its counsel, Nathan Miller. Ms. Alfonso, would you state the other appearances?
Yes. Is this working?
Yes, just hold it kind of close.
I'm Attorney Tara Alfonso, I am representing the complainant in this matter, Todd Baton, and also present today is the respondent, Timothy Naraki, who is our licensee, and he is represented by counsel Daniel Swakis.
Okay, welcome, gentlemen. And we'll just kind of state the nature of our hearing then to get us underway, I'm Lisa Rasmussen, I'm the chairperson of the Public Health and Safety Committee for the City of Wausau. Mr. Timothy Naraki, a summons and complaint has been filed against you, under the provisions of Section 125.12 of the Wisconsin statutes. This hearing has been convened for the purpose of determining whether any of the charges against you are true, and to make a recommendation based upon determination. This committee will examine all evidence concerning the charges through inquiry to both sides. The committee will evaluate and then impartially weigh the evidence. It will determine whether or not any of the charges have been proven solely upon the evidence introduced in this hearing. This hearing is open to the public, a verbatim record of the proceedings is being made by a court reporter. You have exercised your right to be represented by your attorney, who is Daniel Swakis. Tara Alfonso is here as the prosecutor, she will present the case against you to this committee. Nathan Miller is present with us, he will serve as legal advisor to the committee and to the common counsel. Nathan Miller will advise the committee on questions of law and procedure, and he may also direct questions to witnesses on behalf of this committee. You may present evidence and call and examine witnesses and cross-examine witnesses against you, such witnesses will be sworn. Subject to a motion for consideration by the full committee made by a member of the committee, I will rule upon all questions, objections, and motions as to procedural manners, admissibility of evidence, and similar issues. All objections, questions, and motions shall be directed to me. Evidence shall be admitted which has reasonable probative value, but immaterial, irrelevant, and unduly repetitious testimony shall be excluded. Basic principles of relevancy, materiality, and probative force shall govern the proof of all decisions of fact. You may testify on your behalf with regard to the charges against you, however, what you say will be considered as evidence. Further, if you do testify, you may be cross-examined. If a charge or charges against you are proven, you are advised that the committee may recommend to the common counsel that your license be suspended or revoked, and that the common counsel may accept or reject such recommendation, and may determine upon such recommendation whether your license should be suspended or revoked. You have been served with a copy of the summons and complaint, which has been filed with the committee for determination. I now request the court reporter to append as an exhibit to the record, a copy of the summons and complaint. Do you admit to any of the allegations stated in the summons and complaint?
No.
Based on that, I will now ask Ms. Alfonso to present evidence as to the charges before the committee.
If I, if I might, I would like to make a brief opening.
You can, yep, both sides can make a brief opening if you'd like.
Chairman Rasmussen and other members of the Public Health and Safety Committee, Chair Rasmussen has outlined why we're here this evening, and I want you to know tonight, the evidence in this case is going to show that Timothy Naraki holds a Class B beer and liquor license from the City of Wausau, and he operates a tavern known as Rock's Place in the City of Wausau, and as the owner of that bar, he is responsible for the activities and the business that occurs at Rock's Place. Captain Todd Baton has filed the complaint in this matter, and it consists of two counts. The first count is, under Wisconsin statutes, whether Timothy Naraki doing business as Rock's Place operates a riotous and disorderly house. So, that's one aspect of it, that, then, the second count is whether or not based on demerit points that have been assessed against the establishment under the City of Wausau's points, demerit points ordinance, whether or not as a separate matter, that also merits revocation or suspension on the license. So, they're two different things, and the city will have to prove both or one of those things, you can find one or not the other, or both. The evidence tonight is going to consist of several clips of surveillance video that officers or Detective Martin has obtained from Rock's Place regarding events alleged to have occurred at the establishment. There's also going to be one clip of a body cam video from Officer Hagenbusher. The, the video that comes from the tavern, it's difficult to see, it's dark, it's surveillance video, but we will present that for you for your review. There are instances where the city has taken screenshots from those videos in an effort to help you hone in on some of the evidence that's being presented. The evidence is going to show not only are there instances of numerous instances of fights occurring at the bar, weapons threats, actual display or discharge of weapon at the location over approximately a 24-month period, it's also going to show you that employees there are sometimes fearful of retaliation, and that they do not wish to cooperate or speak with officers who come to the tavern to investigate, they are concerned for their own safety. We're also going to show tonight that other bars in the area that are nearby to Rock's do not have the same issues in their bars that Rock's is suffering. Captain Baton will testify as to that, he's done a comparison, Captain Baton will also go through a synopsis of the events that have occurred there since January of 2019. Officer Hagenbusher is going to testify about a recent event that occurred in March, where there was a, an alleged threat of a weapon, and Officer Carlin is going to testify regarding an investigation that occurred where it was also alleged that there were, was a weapon displayed in a fight and activity at the bar. Detective James Martin is going to testify after Officer Carlin, and he's going to indicate the results of his investigation and his obtaining of some video that shows the discharge of a weapon in another event that occurred December of, let me think, December of, wait, hold on. I want to make sure I get it right. Of 20... Record of gunshot, January 12th, 2020. And you can review these things, Captain Baton will also testify about how many points that have been assessed against the premises, that there are currently 150. And finally, Captain, or Chief Ben Livin is going to testify as to whether the department has had conversations with the owner, Timothy Naraki, about what's occurred at the bar, and how those conversations gone, any improvements or lack thereof that they have seen. Thank you.
Thank you for that, so that you're afforded the same opportunities. Attorney Swakis, would you like to make an opening statement at this time?
Just briefly.
Thank you.
In regards to this, I think the evidence today is going to show that the fact that almost 95% of these instances did not occur at Rock's Place, they occurred on a public street or sidewalk. You will find, I think, through testimony that you'll hear tonight, is that Rock's Place has been compliant with trying to protect its patrons by establishing protocol, by talking with police in regards to having walkthroughs done, by putting up more surveillance cameras than originally was there due to the increase in activity, and in fact, that would be the same video that the city is going to present, is the video that my client had put up just for that purpose, based upon talking with Chief Livin. It's my understanding that even with that, you'll hear other evidence that, that other than that, they want to be a, I'm going to say, friends to the police in regards, I talked to Chief Livin in regards to it, and I've talked to my client, I think you'll hear evidence today that he wants to make it more friendly to the police, and that's why he's asking for the walkthroughs, and asking for help in regards to controlling it, and you'll hear that he's taken a number of steps to make this a safer place in regards to it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. With that, we can begin with the first witness. The clerk will swear the witness is in before they testify.
Is it brief? Do you want to have your exhibits premarked at this time?
We'll do it after, okay, let's go ahead and begin with our first witness, and the clerk will swear in the witness.
The city calls as its first witness, Captain Todd Baton.
Okay, and we'll ask the witness to take the seat on the interior, mark District And there's a toggle switch for the microphone at that seat.
Have you raised your right hand, please state your name for the record?
Todd Baton.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony which you shall give in the matter now in hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
It's a preliminary matter, you could indulge me, I have in front of me two documents that have been certified by the clerk regarding Rock's Place, one is a certification of the liquor license that has been premarked as exhibit number one, the other item is a copy, a certified copy by the deputy clerk of the city's ordinance 5.64.078, and I would like to have those entered as self-authenticating exhibits pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 9.09.0274.
Okay.
I don't know if the...
No objection.
Am I approached back?
Yeah, go ahead and bring those up, we'll mark those exhibits.
Okay, would you state your full name for the record, please, and spell your first and last name?
Sure, it's Todd Baton, T-O-D-D-B-A-E-T-E-N.
And what is your occupation?
I'm the patrol captain at the Wausau Police Department.
All right, and how long have you been employed there?
I've been with the Wausau Police Department for about 19 years, in my current role for about the last four and a half years.
What are your duties presently as patrol captain?
So, my duties are primarily administrative, I oversee our uniformed patrol bureau, which consists of approximately 44 patrol officers, and... and eight patrol lieutenants. So I work with those patrol lieutenants to effect the smooth operations of our patrol shifts, review reports, address citizen concerns as they come into my office, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. In your capacity as patrol captain for the city of Wausau, are you familiar with the efforts of city police officers concerning investigations into violations of alcohol beverage laws by taverns and other places where liquor is sold in the city?
Yes, yes, I am.
And are you also aware of calls for police service that are made to taverns and other establishments that hold alcohol licenses?
Yes.
How is it that you become aware of those things?
Sure, it can really happen in a variety of ways. More significant or higher caliber incidents are generally communicated directly to our command staff, including myself. Sometimes that might come via emails or conversations with some of the lieutenants. Additionally, as it pertains to activity within the taverns, we do have a patrol lieutenant who has stewardship over those records concerning calls or incidents that take place in our licensed establishments. And so Lieutenant Felder compiles a monthly document, a report, if you will, that outlines in details all those calls for service at those various locations.
And you review those reports on a regular basis?
Yes.
Now, if there's a significant incident that comes to your attention, do you review more detailed records concerning that event?
Yes, so I do have access to all the incident reports, the computer-aided dispatch records, in which officers may include some notes sort of in a real-time capacity as they're responding. Additionally, I have access to the video files that would be associated with squad dash cam videos or body worn cameras that our officers are issued.
Okay, so let's talk about the reports and body cams. Does the city require police officers to make records of matters relating to police investigations and calls for assistance?
Yes, indeed.
How are those records kept?
So we have a records management system titled Superiorion, and that's where our incident reports are documented. Additionally, officers can utilize that notes component within our computer-aided dispatch system to document various observations or conversations or smaller details. But furthermore, as I mentioned, we have our video recording capability as well. Our officers have and are equipped with body worn cameras, dash cameras within their squads.
And as far as paper records, are those made at or near the time of an incident or a request for service?
Yes, the expectation is that the officers will complete their documentation in a timely fashion.
What would happen if they didn't complete it in a timely fashion?
There would be accountability measures for officers if we do not have those documents completed.
Does that mean in regular people talk? Would that be in regular people talk? Subject potential discipline?
Indeed, yes, it could result in potential discipline.
Okay, and these are all made in the course of the department's regular course of business, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what about body cams and squad videos? How are those saved or kept?
Oh, so at the end of an officer's shift, the body camera is merely docked at a docking station within the police department. As that body camera is charging, the recorded video files are offloaded and then uploaded to an offsite server. The process is similar with these squad cameras as well.
And those can be retrieved?
Yes.
Are there any other ways that records are made of calls for service that may not result in incident reports?
Yeah, as I mentioned, the CAD, the CAD notes, occasionally officers might respond to an incident. It doesn't necessarily rise to the level of or require a formal incident documentation, but we still want to have a record of what had occurred at that incident, and those notes can be, can become a record, a permanent record within the CAD or the computer-aided dispatch system.
All right, thank you. Now, are you familiar with an establishment that's licensed to sell alcohol in the city of Wausau known as Rock's Place?
Yes.
Okay, and would that address be 810 South Third Avenue?
Yes, it is.
And is that address within the corporate city limits of the city of Wausau?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Timothy Naraki?
I'm familiar with Mr. Naraki in the sense that I'm aware that he is the owner of Rock's Place or the holder of that license.
And did you file a complaint in this matter concerning possible revocation or suspension of Timothy Naraki's license to sell alcohol beverages?
Yes.
All right, and what brought you to do that?
So again, I've been with the city for 19 years. I've, you know, as a patrol officer, I've had, on occasion, responded to Rock's Place. As a patrol lieutenant supervising officers on the night shift, I was aware of various office interactions at Rock's Place. And now in my role as a patrol captain, we've seen over the last couple of months some more significant incidents that have occurred and been documented as occurring at Rock's Place, and felt that it was appropriate to take some accountability measures to discuss those matters.
So for purposes of today's hearing and your testimony, sometimes I'll refer to Timothy Naraki, or sometimes I'll refer to Rock's Place, but when I refer to one or the other collectively, I mean both of them because the license is in his name personally. So does the city of Wausau Police Department have records relating to Rock's Place?
Yes.
And in preparation for today's hearing, did you review all those records?
Yes, I was able to review the records.
Okay, and what kinds of records did you review?
So incident reports, dispatch logs, dispatch records, body cam footage.
And so you're personally familiar with the records?
Yes.
And to the best of your knowledge, are they accurate?
Yes.
I'm going to show you what's been premarked as complainant's exhibit number two. Do you recognize that document?
I do.
Okay, and what is that?
This is a synopsis of various incidents that have occurred at Rock's Place throughout a period of time.
And what time period does that cover?
I believe this goes back to January 1 of 2019 and moves forward until a culminating incident on March 4 of 2021.
And have you personally reviewed this synopsis?
Yes.
All right, and to the best of your knowledge, does this synopsis accurately summarize police reports and CAD calls that have occurred at Rock's during this period?
Yes, I think it does.
Now, based upon the synopsis that's been presented, can you describe for the committee generally the numbers and types of different categories of calls noted on the synopsis?
Sure, so as I've reviewed this, and I'm just going to quick, do a quick review here again, if that's okay. I believe there were 15 fight complaints or complaints that were categorized as fights along with, I believe it was five weapons complaints, or complaints rather involving a weapon or threat of a weapon. And then there were a couple of outliers. There was a medical emergency that was listed in here, and a noise complaint as well.
And I'm going to show you what I've also had premarked as complainant's exhibit number three.
Okay.
Can you identify that document for the committee?
Sure, it's a small spreadsheet.
Okay, and who made that spreadsheet?
I put this spreadsheet together just a few days ago.
Okay, and with, so with regard to this spreadsheet, I guess it's titled, for the time being, Tavern Comparison. Can you tell me, though, how many calls did you discover in compiling this spreadsheet that were made to Rock's Place from January 1, 2019 to April 30, 2021?
Sure, so the total calls, if you look to the far right of the spreadsheet, indicates a number of 77. However, I would, I would indicate in that, that as I put this spreadsheet together, there were some calls that I, that I simply just screened out. There were things that I didn't feel were necessarily had a relevance to the location at 810 South Third Avenue. For example, an officer may affect a traffic stop or something in the area and could simply call out, hey, I'm in front of Rock's Place, and that's a call that would not have any bearing at all on Mr. Naraki's establishment. So some of those calls were screened out. It doesn't, so please take that into consideration as you look at that number.
And, I'm sorry, did you, did you indicate, go through with this, how many different categories of calls and the number of calls that you have on the sheet?
Sure, I can do that now, yep. So one category, the first category I have is bar checks. So over this period of time from January 1 to April 30, dispatch records indicated that we conducted 13 bar checks at that location, that we responded to 22 fight calls or calls that were entered in dispatch as a fight, three threat with weapon calls, five medical emergency calls or welfare check, I kind of lumped those together, one noise complaint, 29 criminal miscellaneous or service miscellaneous, those were also two categories I just put together, and then four 911 hangup calls where perhaps that was a possible missed dial or something.
Okay, now, what is a bar check?
So a bar check is when, so kind of going back to Lieutenant Felder in his accountability measures and documentation measures of all of our licensed establishments in town, he will assign likely a pair of officers to go through a tavern and conduct a check there, a check to make sure that there is a licensed bartender on premises, that they have their liquor license posted appropriately, that they're following ordinance, to provide a little bit of visibility, make sure that there's no obviously underage individuals in the establishment, maybe identify them if there's some concerns about that, those types of things.
Okay, so this doesn't indicate that there's any serious issue or any problem going on at a tavern?
No, not at all.
And that's a regular check that the department does on taverns and bars?
Correct, you are correct.
And then what kinds of things fall under criminal service miscellaneous?
Yeah, that could really be sort of a catch-all. A lot of those are often follow-up calls, like an officer maybe is responding to the location, in this case, to this location, maybe to retrieve some requested video surveillance footage, something of that nature. It can, it could really just be a lot of sort of innocuous types of things, or things that don't rise to the, the service miscellaneous part, I should say, things that don't really rise to the level of a criminal matter, but officers responded there. Maybe they were talking with somebody outside and on some foot patrol or something along those lines, but we have a, we have a dispatch record of that now, and it's thrown into that category.
Okay, so off of the spreadsheet that you made, then what items would be of concern to you as patrol captain?
Sure, the category of fights would be one of concern that I was interested in, and the category of threat with weapon calls.
Okay, and noise or medical call, those?
Yes, I mean, as I'm looking at these numbers, they were less of a concern for me as the actual numbers here, but certainly noise complaints are a frequent concern in a citywide capacity. I think the number here was, was of less concern to me.
Okay, now, I want to ask you, why are some of these numbers different from the numbers you gave us from the synopsis? I think you said there were 15 fight calls, but this shows that there's 22.
Sure, yeah, so again, these were, these were numbers that I gathered through the dispatch records, how the call was entered into the system and coded by a dispatcher, presumably. So I went back to January of 2019 and just looked up all the calls for service and just tallied them up and moved forward one month at a time until I got through April of this year. And so some of those calls, like if we take the 22 fight calls that had occurred, some of those calls, we might learn as officers arrive, maybe had some other factors involved that maybe elevated it to a threat with a weapon call. So now it really was that call, it was of a higher caliber. Sometimes perhaps an officer will respond and learn that perhaps it wasn't a fight at all, maybe there was some horseplay or something going on, maybe there was some really loud discussion or banter, and it wasn't necessarily a fight. So, so yes, these are the numbers that reflect what was entered into the dispatch record, but occasionally there are exacerbating factors or mitigating factors to each of these incidents as officers arrive and investigate.
Thank you, Captain Baton. So can you tell me, does the city have any type of system that it uses through the police department to determine whether a liquor licensed establishment might be subject to suspension or revocation proceedings?
So under city Wausau ordinance, there is our point system or the demerit point schedule or assessment system.
I'm going to show you what's already been admitted into evidence as exhibit number four earlier in the proceeding, and could you look through that and tell me if you can tell what that is?
Yes, this is a printout of, or detailing rather, a section from ordinance 5.64.078 of Wausau, Wausau's municipal code, and this is detailing that point schedule that I referenced.
Now, can you explain for the committee and for the record how the point system works or what, and what the purpose of it is?
Sure, so a point, there are point values attributed to a variety of violations that may occur in a licensed establishment, such as, well, as I look at this, perhaps the server is under the influence, there's a point assessment for that. Perhaps the establishment was open after hours, or maybe there were underage persons being served, things of that nature, across a spectrum of violations. And various points are assessed to taverns when these violations are, have occurred, and when an establishment reaches a certain threshold of points, 100 in a 12-month period, then per the ordinance, they will come before this committee and have the opportunity to, for there to be an accountability measure with that, or to at least to have a discussion about some of those problems that, that might be existing that are leading to the commission or the occurrence or the frequency of those violations, and maybe look for a way to mitigate those and work with us, or again, if there's an accountability piece that the committee needs to oppose, and that would be upon them.
And the points, you said there's a number of violations there or issues, do the points increase or decrease based on severity of the incident?
Yes, so, so some of the points, or some of the violations, rather, do have 25 points assessed. There's a few that have 50 points assessed, there's a couple with 75, and there's, I believe even one that has a 100-point value assessed to it. So yes, there are, there is a sort of a gradient there of violations.
Okay. And do points stay forever, or is there some duration where they go away?
Correct, they will eventually drop off, those specific violations will drop off after that. after that period of time, I believe it's a twelve-month period, that, from the violation, then those points will eventually drop off.
Now, I'm going to go back to our exhibit number two.
Okay.
Which is our synopsis. And if you can bear with me, I'd like to go through that synopsis with you and have you outline for us some of these events, or these events that have occurred in, in a little over a two-month period. So did officers respond to Rock's Place on March 4th, 2021?
Yes, they did.
And what was the nature of the call that was responded to?
This came in as a fight complaint at the location.
Okay, and are you aware of how many officers may have responded to Rock's Place as a result of this call?
Yeah, I believe it was about five, or maybe even seven officers. Typically speaking, we'll have three officers working on the side of the river, three or four on that west side of town, and it's not uncommon for a couple of additional officers to come over if there is a call of, of an altercation involving numerous people.
And while Officer Hagenbush is going to testify in more detail about this, is there anything significant about this event?
Just bear with me as I'm kind of reviewing through the synopsis here again. Yeah, as this fight call came in, it, it, you know, one report, we did have multiple reports here, indicated that there were potentially as many as a dozen people involved in this altercation, which likely is what resulted in, in a larger number of officers responding there. But really, a crux of this call was that one of the individuals interviewed or on scene at the time indicated that a firearm may have been displayed during that, during that altercation.
Okay, and were any points assessed to the establishment as a result of this call?
Yes, fifty points were assessed for failure to maintain an orderly premises.
And what does that kind of mean, failure to maintain an orderly premises?
Due to the nature of this incident, the fights, the, the display of the firearm, likely, the, just the, really the potential dangers associated with that.
And were officers dispatched to Rock's again? Well, we're going to go past in time, starting with most current to the oldest. Dispatched there on February 21st, 2021?
Yes, yes, we had a couple of officers that responded to Rock's on that evening.
And what was the nature of that incident?
So that was to initiate an investigation into a call that had come in reporting a fight that had actually occurred the previous evening. So officers had not responded originally to that call, this was a, an after-the-fact call. We received that information that, hey, there was a fight on the twentieth, we need to look into that, so officers responded on the twenty-first.
Okay, and did you have information as to who the complainant was?
I do not believe we had that. I believe that that was a anonymous complainant. Yes, it was a refused complainant.
And were there any, anything significant that raises your concerns regarding that call?
Yes, the heightened concern here with this incident was similar to the, the previous one, is that in this, in this case, there were two individuals that had had some type of altercation, and that both of them had, had displayed guns or pulled guns on each other.
Or at least allegedly.
Allegedly, correct, thank you.
And did, did any points get assessed in this case?
Yes, a total of one hundred points, so fifty points for failing to summon the police to this incident originally, and then fifty points as an enhancement for a firearm being involved.
Now, can you explain for me, what if anything, is the significance of a fifty-point assessment for failing to summon police? What is the concept behind that sort of thing?
I think that the failure to notify the police or summon the police is, is indicative of a lack of cooperation, a desire to have the police presence there and to be able to resolve these incidents in a timely manner. My concern as, as a citizen here in a resident of Wassa, but as a patrol captain, charged with making sure that we have safe neighborhoods and, and those types of things, is the concern that without this being reported, our officers cannot begin a successful and timely investigation into holding individuals accountable that possibly may have access to firearms and be, be using them in a, in an irresponsible and unsafe manner.
Thank you, and then, moving on, did officers respond on January 22nd, 2021?
Yes.
And what was the nature of that complaint?
This was another fight complaint that came in as a, an anonymous call indicating that there was some type of a physical altercation outside the bar involving multiple people.
And was there any concern or complaint that weapons were involved in that complaint?
Not in this incident. It, it, it would seem from the synopsis set, as officers were able to make contact with individuals on scene, they learned that the, the likely kind of catalyst for this was an individual that was rather intoxicated, seeking to drive home, that individual's friends or, you know, associates that were there with them had, had taken their keys so as to prevent that, and that had created a large scene. So no enforcement action was taken, and I believe a, a safe ride was arranged for that individual.
Now, interestingly enough, it looks like officers may have responded five days earlier to Rock's. What was that response about?
Yes, so that was on the seventeenth, we had officers respond again for another fight complaint. This was a report of a couple of females that were fighting, having a physical fight. I believe the officers, according to the, the report, or the, rather, the dispatch record, had made contact with bar staff who indicated that there had been a small disagreement or some type of a small scuffle, and that the suspects were asked to leave at that time, they did. So there was no, no other enforcement action taken.
And then about another month earlier, on December 19th, 2020, it appears officers responded again to Rock's Place. What was the nature of that response?
That was another fight complaint, that was also an anonymous reporting party calling to report a physical fight, claiming that there were as many as thirty people that were fighting. Upon officer arrival, they did not observe any active altercation. A couple of patrons that were still in the area indicated that a couple of females had been fighting, and they were no longer on scene, no enforcement action was taken in that incident.
And then we get to November 6th, 2020, another response to Rock's Place. Would you be able to let us know the summary of that call?
Sure. Officers responded to inquire about a fight, or an incident, an unrelated incident at a, at a nearby establishment next door, and while on scene with, kind of looking into this unrelated matter, another incident had occurred right there at the location at Rock's Place. It was determined that this was not necessarily a fight, in the sense that there were two people having an altercation. They learned that a female was, was upset at a perceived lack of attention from her significant other, and had thrown herself on the ground in somewhat of a tantrum. So that was, that was able to be resolved quickly by the officers.
Okay, and then, a few days before that, it looks like on November 1st, 2020, officers responded again to Rock's Place. Could you describe for us that event?
Yep, so officers responded again. A bartender called this time to report a fight involving a couple of individuals inside the bar. Said that this, the bartender had indicated that the, the fight had started between these two individuals, but was quickly growing as other people were getting involved, whether, whether they had sort of picked a side in this, or whether they were trying to break it up, I'm not quite exactly sure. By the time officers got there, there was no evidence to support a need for enforcement action in that case.
And, and would I be correct in, in asking you, does this appear to be the, the first call you've reviewed where somebody from the bar, a bartender, an employee actually called to report?
Yes, that would be correct, according to these, this information in the synopsis.
And the others? It wasn't any employee?
The others were anonymous reporters.
And then, I see there was a, an incident on September 19th, 2020, what was that complaint?
That came in as a noise complaint at about eleven PM. This was, again, an anonymous reporting party indicating that they could hear loud music approximately a block away. Officers made contact with Mr. Naraki, who was able to just speak briefly with the, I believe it was a DJ that evening, and there was no further issues or concerns as a result of that noise, and no enforcement action taken as a result of that.
And then it looks like February 23rd, 2020, there was another response to Rock's Place?
Yes, this call came in as a medical emergency. An ambulance was dispatched to the, to the tavern after it was learned that a woman had fallen to the ground, was in the bar vomiting, coming in and out of consciousness. Investigation showed that likely this, this individual had been drinking at a different location, had come to the, to the tavern with an associate of hers who had since left. It was learned from bar staff that while this, this female was indeed served a drink, she did not even consume that entire drink and, and had fallen off of her chair, or something like that, thus requiring the medical attention.
And then on February 2nd, 2020, it looks like officers again responded to Rock's complaint. Would you describe for the committee the summary and nature of that call?
Yes, this was another fight complaint with a, a refused complainant, an anonymous reporting party, talking about a, a reporting, rather, an active fight in the bar. So officers responded, observed people yelling, shouting, did not see any physical altercation, but noted that the, the bartender, the staff there on scene appeared reluctant or somewhat apprehensive to provide any additional details about that incident. The, the officers rather interviewed this suspect who was, was quite intoxicated, but I do not believe there was any enforcement action taken or able to be established in this specific incident.
Okay, thank you. Then, January 12th, 2020, there was a response to Rock's Place. Can you tell me, first of all, approximately how many officers responded to this call?
So we, we probably had about seven, at least seven patrol officers respond to the call, and I know that there was additional follow-up from our, our investigative bureau.
And what, what, what was the incident that they were responding to that evening?
Sure, this is a report of a gunshot outside of the tavern.
Okay, and while Officer Carlin will be testifying more in, in detail concerning this, are there any significant details to summarize?
Yeah, witness indicated that they had seen a couple of males having some type of a confrontation, an argument, yelling at one another. One of those males then went to a vehicle that was parked in front of Rock's Place on the west side of, of South Third Avenue, went to the vehicle and retrieved what appeared to be a firearm, and started moving back toward a crowd of individuals that was outside the rear door to Rock's Place, which is located on the south side of the building, opens to the parking lot. It appears that another male, perhaps the, the very one that he had been arguing with, either tried to block this individual, or, or do something, kind of stand in his way, at which point the individual who had retrieved the gun, raised the gun in the air, fired off a single round, then returned to the vehicle and left the area southbound in that vehicle.
And then, a few days before that, on January 6th, 2020, it appears there was another officer response at Rock's Place. What was that nature of that call?
Yes, this was another report of a threat with a weapon that officers responded to. The reporting party indicated that there was some type of a verbal altercation in the bar that resulted in a male threatening to come back with a weapon. I believe the verbiage used was that he was going to come back strapped, or something to that effect, which was interpreted by that witness as, as this individual was going to return with a gun. At that point, and I believe, although I'm, I'm not positive, I believe that a bartender or bar staff may have been the reporting party on this, because those officers made contact with bar staff there. It was learned that after this individual had left the scene, all the remaining patrons in the tavern were directed to leave, and the, the doors were secured to the residence. And in fact, this male did return several minutes later. Officers were able to, to get in contact with an individual. I do not believe a weapon was located in this instance, but I believe that they were able to substantiate an arrest for, for a, an OWI offense.
And then, October 17th, 2019, I guess there was another observation at Rock's. What was the nature of that?
This was an incident where an officer was conducting some foot patrol in the area, observed a male and a couple of females outside the bar. I believe what really attracted the officer's attention to them was the male was holding a can or a cup that likely had an alcohol beverage in there, so initiated some contact and speaking with this male. Learned that, or maybe received some type of admission that it was this male's intention to use the, the lawn adjacent to the building there as a, as a urinal to relieve himself. So officer had some discussion with bar staff about ensuring that patrons keep alcoholic drinks inside the, the resident, or the, the business.
And on September 7th, 2019, there was apparently another response to the tavern. Could you describe for us the synopsis of that call?
Yes, this was another fight complaint that was a, a result of officers conducting some foot patrol in the area. Officers actually observed an individual strike a bouncer, a, a bar security staff member in the face. The investigation showed that there, there were some other factors involved, including the, the suspect in this incident in striking the bouncer had, had been asked to leave the tavern, I believe, and then attempted to, to gain entry again into the bar, at which point this bouncer had become physically assault of with that, with that patron, who then responded by striking the, the bouncer. So it's, it's notable in this case that not only was, was there a disorderly conduct charge for the, the suspect for striking the bouncer, but the bouncer also was, was issued a disorderly conduct citation, I believe. Yes, two municipal citations for disorderly conduct were issued.
Thank you. And then, August 17th, 2019, again, officers appear to have responded to Rock's Place. What was the nature of that response?
This was another fight complaint involving possible weapon use. Officers responded, there were numerous officers that responded for a report of some type of a verbal altercation that, that had resulted in individuals being asked to leave the bar, but then they returned a short time later with an estimated eight individuals, eight males with handguns that were reported to have been outside of the bar, some down the block and not on the bar property. There was not any report of, of shots fired, but security had, 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 had been involved. It had, it indicated that these people had, had had some type of confrontation or verbal confrontation, they'd been asked to leave. One bartender, I think it's notable in this, had indicated that they, that they saw some type of a red, almost like a laser pointer-style dot move across their body, that they interpreted or felt was associated with perhaps some optics or sighting on, on a firearm, and that it moved across their body. Also, in this incident, it should be noted that as they were interviewed by responding officers, one of the bartenders indicated that, that they were reluctant to provide information for fear of retribution from these individuals involved, that there was some apprehension there.
And then, August 15th, 2019, August 15th, 2019, just two days earlier, it appears officers were again dispatched to Rock's Place. What was the nature of that call for service?
Sure, this was a report, another report of a threat with a weapon. Officers were dispatched by the bartender. Officers were dispatched by the bartender, or they were dispatched for a report that was made by the bartender of a male that was threatening to use a gun in the residence. So it sounds like that earlier on, a bartender observed the suspect having some type of a physical altercation with a patron, and he was told to leave. So we, officers were not notified of that physical altercation. But then apparently, this individual who had been asked to leave returned. The bartender then phoned dispatch for police assistance. But while on the phone, it sounds like this suspect had produced a firearm, according to several witnesses, had produced a firearm and was kind of waving it around. There were some alternating reports that the firearm was able to be knocked out of that individual's hand somehow, and the firearm was never located. It was theorized that somebody else had picked it up, perhaps a girlfriend or an associate of that individual, although there were multiple people that indicated that they did see this firearm.
And then July twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, we have another call to Rock's Place. Could you describe for the committee what that call was about?
Yes, this was another fight complaint with an anonymous reporting party indicating that there was a fight involving approximately ten people. The fight was not in progress as officers arrived. The bartender, in being interviewed by the officers, indicated that a female had been punched outside, and that resulted in further verbal argument with individuals.
And then May twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, it looks like officers again responded to the bar. What is the nature of that incident?
So this was another fight complaint where officers responded for a report of around fifteen people having some type of a fight or an altercation. Parties were separated at the time that officers did arrive on scene. In this case, there seems to be a little bit of a divergence in what had been seen by the staff. So we have the bar staff reported seeing this altercation on some in-house video surveillance system. I believe at this time, I'm not confident that the system had recording capabilities. I don't quite recall, but they were able to have a live view of whatever that camera was showing. And so the bartender was able to see what they believed was an altercation, whereas the bouncer, who was working that night, presumably at the door, I guess I don't exactly know where that staff would have been, did not report seeing any type of physical altercation and said that it was more of a verbal dispute.
And then about a week earlier from that incident, May eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, another response to Rock's Place. Could you describe for the committee what occurred?
Yes, this was yet another fight complaint that had come in where officers responded to a group of people that were yelling and screaming outside, maybe six to ten individuals. There were actually a couple of security individuals working that evening. I believe a male and a female security staff members were working in addition to the bar staff, the bartenders, rather, that were working. It sounds like that there had been a verbal disagreement that had happened between a couple of females, but the females had originally been asked to leave. But then I believe this was the call where, yes, where a security guard tried to break up a fight between these females and was actually struck by one of them. While they believed that that was likely inadvertent, it sounds like this fight was of such a nature that other people trying to break up this fight were kind of getting caught up in it. I believe in this incident is when the male security guard, at some point, just left and went home, had kind of had enough at this point and had not stayed there that evening. I might be confusing this with a different complaint where there were two security guards, but this might be the one.
And then April seventh, two thousand and nineteen, another response to the bar. Can you describe that?
This came in as another fight complaint where an officer responded to the tavern for a report of three to four individuals fighting in the parking lot. There was not a tremendous amount of information in the CAD call from this one. Presumably, as the officers got on scene, they weren't able to establish that there was anything actively going on at that time, because this resulted in some CAD comments and not an incident report or any enforcement action, rather.
And I guess this is a good opportunity to kind of summarize, since we're getting close. Some of these events are described as event number, and some are noted as case number. And you just said this was a CAD call. How can we tell which is which?
Yeah, that would really be the event numbers versus the case numbers. In the incidents that have the event numbers, that would be just that, what you said. There was a dispatch record of that incident. There was no enforcement action taken. Now, just by taking a case number doesn't mean necessarily that there was an arrest. There could be an ongoing investigation still, or we were unable to locate a suspect in that incident, but it definitely was documented in a formal incident report. So it sometimes can be interpreted as representative of sort of the caliber of the officer response afterward, or what their assessment, rather, of it afterward was, or their ability to establish really what had happened.
Then March fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, officers responded to Rock's Place. Could you describe for the committee what happened during that incident?
Yes, this came in as a fight complaint where officers responded for two males that had been fighting. It sounds like one of the males had been playing pool. Another male came in, not sure what that argument was about. But it resulted in a male victim here that the officers had contact with. Having been struck in the face, he admitted to then throwing a cue ball or a pool ball at this alleged attacker, striking him. And then that suspect then left the area and went to neighboring tavern where he was located and taken into custody.
And approximately, or how many officers responded to that incident?
That would have been about five officers that responded. There was the main investigating officer, who was assisted by about four other officers in the initial response over there.
And then it looks like New Year's Eve, New Year's Day sort of period, January first, two thousand and nineteen, officers responded concerning an incident that happened at Rock's. Would you explain that?
Yes, so this incident would be another one of those that was reported after the fact, well after the fact of the incident. So you can see it was ten A. M., and officers responded to the emergency department of St. Clair's Hospital to make contact with an individual that had alleged to have been involved with a physical assault at Rock's Place several hours earlier. It was determined that there was a laceration to her head. She had a dislocated shoulder, indicating that, you know, she'd been jumped or assaulted by a couple of other women while at the tavern. In this case, she indicated that Mr. Naraki had responded or made brief contact with her at the bar at some point, but no action was taken. We were not notified of that incident until ten o'clock that next day, or that day, rather, of New Year's Day.
Now, did this event receive any points?
Yes, there were fifty points assessed, again, for failure to summon police.
And then, I think, I believe, our final one, January first, two thousand and nineteen, two thirteen in the morning, so New Year's Eve into New Year's Day, officers responded again. Could you describe for us the nature of that incident?
Sure, this was about eight hours prior to the last one. This was another fight complaint where officers responded for, again, a report of a fight in progress outside. There was a large group of people kind of out in the middle, milling around in the avenue there on South Third Avenue. Security staff were able to, or reported that it initially had broken up the fight, that the security staff had broken up the fight, but that the individuals had started fighting again. One of the security guards involved stated that they, in fact, were struck a few times as well, and there was an arrest for battery and resisting, an officer that was made as a result of that incident.
Now, I'm curious, in all these events that we've gone through, only three of them have been assessed points, is that right?
Yes, I believe you're right.
And does the ordinance, as you're familiar with it, allow points to have potentially have been assessed for some of these other incidents?
Yes.
But they weren't?
Correct.
And then, I'd like to go back. You still have exhibit number three?
Yes, I do.
So exhibit number three, you indicated that you prepared this.
Yes.
So are there other taverns in the area of Rock's Place?
There are.
What ones are those?
Specifically, M. N. R. Station, which is located yards away, right next door, at eight eighteen South Third Avenue, and Christine's Bar, which is just down the road at, I believe it's nine thirty-six, South Third Avenue.
Sorry. So can you review for us or explain for us what you saw? You investigated calls for service to these establishments as well?
Yes, so as I looked at those original calls for service, or those calls for service, rather, at Rock's Place, I thought that it would, I would be remiss if I did not look at the other taverns that were nearby, that were, you know, right in that same neighborhood. So I looked at those same categories for those two other taverns as well.
And what did your review reveal?
So for the bar checks, as I look at M. N. R. Station and Christine's, we had ten bar checks at M. N. R. Station and two bar checks at Christine's. I believe there was a period of time when Christine's may not have been open as much, is my understanding. I could be wrong in that. Fight calls, compared to the twenty-two that had come up for Rock's Place, there were seven in that same time period at M. N. R. Station, three at Christine's. Threat with weapon calls, there was one at M. N. R. Station, zero reported at Christine's. Med emergencies or med calls or welfare checks, there were nine at M. N. R. Station and zero at Christine's. There was one noise complaint at M. N. R. Station with zero at Christine's. The criminal miscellaneous and service miscellaneous, there were twenty-two at M. N. R. Station and eight at Christine's. And there was one reported theft at M. N. R. Station during this time period and zero at Christine's, compared to the zero at Rock's as well. And then nine-one-one, the hang-up calls, there were six at M. N. R. Station and zero at Christine's.
Do you find this comparison to be significant to you as patrol captain in any way?
I do, particularly as I look at that fight call. Again, I explained earlier that those calls, that number of twenty-two, is how those calls were entered in, as I just pulled them up in the CAD system. I think, as I explained, some of those, there might be a little bit of flux in some of those numbers as officers get on scene, initiated an investigation and learn, was this something of a higher caliber or was this something a little lesser that we were able to understand? But I think if we apply that same measuring stick, if you will, to those numbers at M. N. R. Station and Christine's, I think it is significant, especially when we have one of those taverns used as comparison is right next door to this tavern.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions at this time of Captain.
Thank you. Attorney Swigis, do you wish to cross-examine Lieutenant or Captain Baiton? Go ahead.
You mentioned Christine's wasn't open during this whole period of time, this two and a half year.
I don't know that for a fact. I'm presuming, I didn't know exactly what was the call or the reason for the much lower numbers at their location. There, I'm sorry, did?
No, I'm just saying, so you don't know if it was open or not?
Yeah, so there were a couple of months there, particularly during COVID time, where none of these establishments were open. I guess that would be a more fair statement or assessment.
Captain, you want the bars and taverns to be kind of partners with the police to keep incidents down, is that right?
Attorney Swigis, can you pull your microphone a little closer? It's hard to hear you. Just check and make sure it's on first. It's got a switch, there you go.
All right. There we go.
You want the bars or taverns to be like partners with the police to cut down on incidents? That means you want them to call and be helpful and provide information and call anytime there's an issue, is that right?
We would like to have the bars report those incidents in their establishments, yes.
So if a bar calls in regards to fights and one bar doesn't, there'd be a significant difference in numbers depending on who calls or what's going on, is that right?
I don't know that there would be a significant difference in numbers. I think it depends, we might have other people that would call besides the bar. I don't know. Like, for example, the refused complainants in many of these calls, I'm not sure if those were patrons or if those are neighbors in the community. I'm not sure.
And what I'm saying, though, is if, so we don't know, first of all, these numbers that you have in this tavern comparison, we just know these are numbers that were entered based upon the nine-one-one call.
The calls that came into dispatch, that's what those numbers represent.
And so in regards to this, that's not actual fights, just what was called into dispatch, is that correct?
It was called in and coded as a fight when it was entered, yes. That's my understanding.
And so anytime a person calls or wants to have assistance at a bar, it'd be logged into dispatch as a fight? If that's what occurred or what?
Well, I think, I mean, I think what you just explained here at the end, I think it would be dependent on what information they shared with the dispatcher. If it wasn't described as a fight, it likely would not be coded as a fight. If it was described as a medical emergency, for example, it would be coded as such. Or a noise complaint, for example, it would be coded as such.
And other than the fights, the, and it appears that Rock's Place and M. R. Station are pretty similar. Would you agree with that?
As far as those other numbers, yes, particularly as you look at, yeah, like the med calls or the welfare checks, the criminal and service miscellaneous, those numbers appear very comparable.
Now, you drafted up, you were the one who obtained these numbers from exhibit two, I believe, the tavern comparison, is that correct?
Yes, those numbers just came from our CAD system.
But you were the one to go retrieve those?
Yes.
All right. In exhibit three is the synopsis that we just went through with the city attorney, is that right?
Exhibit two, I believe you're referencing.
Is the part that you just went through, is that right?
That's what mine says, is exhibit two.
All right. And then the tavern comparison, is that exhibit?
Mine is marked exhibit three.
Okay, I just had them backwards. By the way, when we talk about bar checks, are these standard bar checks that the police do to all bars?
We try to get into all the taverns, yes.
I mean, these are that you guys go in and say, we're going to go check this date and we'll go check this one. So that's not an abnormal number, right?
Correct.
These are, now, it's my understanding that either bartenders or management from Rock's Place is called to have walkthroughs done.
Yes. Yep, that's my understanding as well.
Would those numbers be on this chart at all? Or would they just be, because they're not nine-one calls, those would be outside that for them to say, hey, come on in any Saturday, walk through the place, make sure it's okay?
Correct, yeah. Those would not be on there, yep.
And you agree that Rock's Place and management has done that on a number of occasions, specifically weekends, is that right?
I'm aware that they have done that on occasion. I could not tell you how many times that they've done that, but yes, I'm aware that they have called and asked for that.
And those times wouldn't be recorded anywhere, the times?
So they would be recorded in dispatch records if an officer called out there and said specifically, hey, yeah, exactly, I'm at Rock's Place, there would be a CAD record of that. So to your point of, has Mr. Naraki requested those on occasion? Yes, I'm aware of that, and I'm aware that we have obliged him on those occasions when it's been asked for.
And if they were, the officer called in nine-one saying, I'm stopping to do a walkthrough, could that be under criminal service miscellaneous numbers there?
Perhaps.
If the officer indicated that nine-one?
Yeah, perhaps. It likely would be coded, however, as an extra patrol. So that would be a separate category that we could pull up and get those numbers as well.
Now, I'm going to go through some, you were the one who drafted exhibit two up in regards to this, right?
No, I was not.
You testified about the complaints on specific dates, is that correct?
Yes, from the synopsis, from exhibit two.
And did you review the reports to have this drafted up or? And did you review the reports to have this drafted up, or who drafted, first of all, Exhibit two?
So I did not draft this up. I believe Ms. Alfonso drafted this. From existing reports.
Did you, did you review the reports to depict the synopsis?
So I have reviewed the reports and reviewed them to make sure that they were consistent with the synopsis that is contained on this document.
So you have reviewed the reports for each of these incidences, is that correct?
Yes, I've reviewed incident reports and/or the dispatch records. So in the, in the cases where there wasn't a formal incident report completed, I reviewed to see what CAD notes there might have been entered.
In regards to the March 4th incident, there was 50 points assessed for failing to maintain orderly premises, is that correct?
Yes.
And I assume that's because the bartender or caller has called to say there was a fight at that or altercation at that location?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The 50 points?
Yes.
Was it assessed because of the fight that occurred?
Well, it would, it would be, yes, that that would be a component of the fight having occurred at that incident.
So anytime an argument is called in or some pushing and shoving, the department could assess points for that, or?
Well, I think it, as I look at the violations, it's possible that a lot of these incidents could have had points assessed. I think when Lieutenant Felder is compiling these incidents, he's trying to look at some of those case notes, the CAD notes, to see what other things have, are associated with that incident and to see if it warrants the assessment of points.
Well, my question was, because I want to know, is it because of the, the fight or is it because of the employee didn't call soon enough? I guess there's two things in there that I look at, and I want to make sure which one that was for.
Yeah, so in this incident, I mean, based on that, it, that it cites failure to maintain orderly premises as opposed to failure to summon police, I would say that it's, it's not about a bar staff lack of calling the police, that it's about the incident getting out of hand and disorderly.
And what I meant, I am correct that that could be used at any incident where there's a fight in any bar, right? I mean, hypothetically, if there's a fight tomorrow down at Hiawatha, you could give 50 points. If there's a fight at Big Bull Claws, you could give 50 points. Is that what, hypothetically, you could do that?
Well, I don't know that I want to get into hypotheticals, as I said before. I mean, I would, I would say our officers would go and look at all of the factors involved. We recognize that if a disagreement occurs or some type of, of argument occurs in your, you know, in your example at Hiawatha, my expectation is that the officers would go investigate and speak with individuals involved, would speak with the staff there and any potential witnesses. I think if we were having, I don't know, upwards of a dozen or 15 or more fights over a certain time period at Hiawatha, we would, we would look at that point assessment potentially differently.
I'm just trying to make sure that it's even fielded for all bars.
Yep.
How it's, how it's given out.
Yep, no, I got you.
So in regards to this, the officer, at least this report's down, it looks like one of the bar employees called, is that correct?
I'm sorry, which one?
By March 4th.
Okay.
It looks like one of the employees called.
So I believe we had two separate calls. I'm not sure who both of them were.
It does say in here, while appears reporting party may have been a bar employee?
Yes, yes, one of them, correct. Yep, you're right.
And this was, was not a call out what appears to be fistfight or altercation where someone got hurt?
I do not believe there were any injuries.
Looks like just two males yelling and pushing each other?
Two males yelling and pushing each other and one male likely retrieving or potentially retrieving a firearm from a vehicle. I believe this was.
Did this happen inside or outside?
So the pushing and yelling was occurring in the parking lot of the establishment, per surveillance video, and actually per officer's response. The officers in this instance, two of the officers were actually rather close by, around the corner, as case may be, and were able to respond just by driving around the corner. So the individuals that were there on scene likely didn't even notice them until one of the officers had parked his vehicle, activated his emergency lights, at which time one of these involved individuals fled on foot from the area and a small foot pursuit ensued. That individual is later located.
And no weapons were found on any person there at that point?
You are correct. No weapons were found in this incident.
And so the police were there pretty quickly at that point, since they're right around the corner?
Yes.
Now, the synopsis for February 21st is basically a follow-up from an event that happened on February 20th, is that right?
So it was, it was the initiation of an incident from the 20th, correct?
And, and there was 100 points assessed in regards to this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that's assessed from the February 20th incident that occurred? You know, it starts out with February 21st, right?
Yes.
Now, on February 20th, the incident, the police were called, why?
The police were never called on the 20th. They responded on the 21st.
Okay. And why, why did the police respond?
Because they had received an anonymous complaint that there had been an altercation the evening before, which would have been the 20th.
And in regards to that altercation, did that happen outside?
In this case, I believe, yes, that they, it began inside, a verbal dispute is what was observed on the video surveillance that eventually moved out to the parking lot.
So verbal dispute is goes on inside the bar and then the parties go outside?
Yes.
And I think, I think the city attorney is going to have some video of this, but at that point, one of the individuals, after he went outside, went and obtained a gun and came back, is that correct?
I believe the information actually provided was that they did not go obtain a gun, that they actually retrieved a gun from their waistband and carried it openly in that area.
But the, other than a verbal altercation, all the other items here happened outside?
In this incident. Well, according to the synopsis, yes.
And you know if there was any employees outside at the time this occurred for them to call the police?
So according to the video surveillance, at least as it was documented in the case report, once video surveillance was obtained, the bartender that was working that evening was visible, coming out from behind the bar, going out and looking outside the door at the confrontation and then returning back behind the bar, but we were not notified. A bartender, or I'm sorry, a bouncer or security staff member that was working that evening was observed on the video surveillance, also going out, looking out that door, observing the confrontation presumably, and not calling the police. So we, we learned about it through an anonymous source that next day.
But this, this confrontation, how long does it last outside?
I could not tell you exactly how long it lasts. Minutes? Couple minutes? Maybe, maybe briefer than that, I'm not sure. I'm sure the other officers will have information about that.
Okay, and that's just a question?
Yeah, no, no, that's a fair question.
Now, on the 122, there was a call based upon a physical fight outside the bar again, is that correct?
Yes.
When the officers arrived, there was no fighting going on?
Correct.
And this is actually just about a patron who was intoxicated and their friends wanted to take his key?
Yes.
So there was no actual fight that occurred?
Correct.
Even though it says fight complaint, it's about friends taking care of someone who's intoxicated, wanting to make sure they don't drive?
Well, I think sometimes I'm aware that, you know, as a patrol officer, I responded to many incidents where there were friends, I guess people that identified each other as friends, that were definitely fighting. So I understand, I think I understand your question, but I still believe that even though maybe their friends had some really good intentions, it's possible that this person was engaging in some really disruptive, maybe even violent behavior assault of in an intoxicated state. Now, I could be very wrong on that, and I think that, that they were likely trying to do a very good deed by preventing this person from driving, and I appreciate and applaud their efforts in doing that. But it, but it definitely created a disturbance that resulted in the police response. And in this case, I'm grateful that our officers were.
I agree.
Sure.
I just want to know that this appears to be friends taking away keys or someone.
Yes.
And we would rather have that happen than someone who appears to be intoxicated driving on the Wausau City Road, is that right?
Yeah.
Now, on the 17th, January 17th, which is just a few days earlier, there was a call in regards to a couple, what appears to be a small scuffle between a couple females. They were asked to leave and they did, is that right?
Yes, it looks like they were compliant with that.
And, and you would ask the bar owners to put a policy in place, I assume, that if someone gets into a fight, that they should, they should have them leave immediately and plus call the police?
I would, I would love them to call the police, yes, and I think that that's appropriate for them to try to get, gain compliance from these individuals and patrons and ask them to leave the residence or the establishment.
On, on December 19th of 20, there was an anonymous, I believe you said anonymous complaint about 30 people involved in a fight in a parking lot, is that correct?
Yes.
And the police showed up, is that right?
Yes.
And this is outside again, is that right?
Correct.
And apparently there were a couple patrons that talked to the police, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know if those patrons were outside or?
If they were outside when they talked to the police or?
When they're outside, when they, when they saw the patrons, the other two females fighting?
I don't recall that. I don't recall. It, it's, it's possible that the CAD notes might indicate exactly where they were when they told the officers that. It's also possible that that might not have been entered in the CAD notes because it appears that, you know, there was no enforcement action taken and there was no altercation going on. So the officers likely put some, some notes in there and then responded to their next call that evening.
Then I'm going to go to November 6th.
Okay.
Indicates a fight complaint again, but this time the officers go to Rock's Place, not about a complaint at Rocks, but about a complaint next door, is that correct? And that while standing in a bar, a woman apparently wanted to be dramatic and threw herself on the ground?
Sounds like it, yes.
I'm trying to get it from the notes.
Yep.
And in regards to that, it's labeled as a fight complaint, but again, it's not a real fight. Would you, it's not someone punching or hitting someone, is that right?
So in this case, yes, I would agree with you on that, that the, that the individual who could, that was alleged to be a victim, who was on this, on this ground throwing some type of a tantrum, was in fact not a victim at all, but then after, upon investigation and speaking with officers, agreed that she had been behaving in such a way to get some attention from, quote, her man.
Now, you testified, I'm going to go to November 1st, and this is also another, a fight about two males inside the bars, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, in regards to this, you also testified that this was the first time the bartender ever called since, from, from now till back to November 1st, is that right?
Yes, I do recall saying that.
But in fact, on March 4th of 21, a bartender called, is that right?
Yes, so it indicates in the synopsis, it appears that one of the reporting parties may have been a bar employee. Again, I think that the officers that will likely hear from afterward might be able to address specifically if that was able to be substantiated.
So I'm saying this may not be the first time since, we're going backwards.
Sure, yep, nope, I got you.
Going backwards, it may not be the first time that a bartender called in regards to a fight.
Sure, so it might have been the second time out of these fights.
And so far. This would only been the third scuffle inside the premises going back to then, isn't that correct?
I would have to go back and look at every single one. I'll take your word for it on that, but we're going through a lot of incidents here.
And I know, and I'm just trying to make sure we go through them. Now, on September 19th, that was a couple months earlier, this is 2020, there was a complaint about loud music?
Yes.
Did the officers hear any loud music when they pulled up?
I do not, I don't recall exactly, in that it's not really in the synopsis, so I would have, that leads me to believe that this was not this very conspicuous incident, or conspicuously loud, I should say. But I don't, I don't know that for sure.
And then the next one is like seven months before that where, it's not a fight, but it's an emergency where an ambulance was called, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is a woman who was, came into the bar, had two sips and then was passed out. Did something happen to her, is that correct?
Well, it looks like they had half their drink. I don't know if that's two sips. I'm not sure how large the drink was. But I, yes, this was, this was somebody, I believe it was learned, that was likely drinking extensively off-site. And as, as I read that, I had some concerns about, was this an individual who was visibly intoxicated? And was there potential for over-serving in this incident or serving an intoxicated person? It looks like the officer involved with that incident was able to attribute this to, again, maybe some off-site drinking and felt that this was not something that should reflect necessarily specifically on the tavern.
Now, on, we're going to go to just a couple weeks before that, February 2nd of 2020.
Okay.
This is the individual who was extremely intoxicated in the bar, is that right?
Yes.
And do you know if the bartender was the one who gave, was the call on this?
According to the synopsis, this was also a refused complainant.
And what's refused complainant?
Someone who did not want to leave their name. So is, is it, is it possible that could be a staff member if it's someone who refused to leave their name? Sure, that's possible. My, my hope is, is that those individuals would, would identify themselves, allow us to, to be able to establish that, hey, we, we had information from the, from the tavern staff. I'm familiar with the practice generally of Lieutenant Felder, who compiles our monthly tavern report, of putting a bold font when we hear from tavern staff, and I think that that's helpful for the Public Health and Safety Committee members to recognize that, okay, this was actually an incident that was reported by the tavern staff. I'm not sure if, we don't know that in this case, you're correct.
Let me go back to January 12th, which is a very serious incident. It indicates that an individual was, are they, the police responded to the bar because of a gunshot, is that correct?
Yes.
The gun, in this case, or the incident in this case, all was outside, is that correct?
The, the information or whatever the witness had observed had happened outside. So, and, and the incident involving the firing of the round had occurred outside. So whether, where that witness was, I don't know. So whether that was carryover from inside the tavern, I guess if you, if you kind of follow what I'm saying, it's, it's.
I understand, I'm just asking.
But yes, the, the information provided by the witness is, details actions taken outside the tavern.
And. In regards to this, in fact, the cartridge was 15 yards southeast of the bar where it was found. That's the empty cartridge of it, of a round being fired, is that correct?
Yes.
There is video footage from the cameras from the outside of Rocks in regards to this?
Yes.
And I'm going to go back to January 6th, which is only six days before that.
Okay.
This is a reporting party, was, was the bartender again, is that correct? Or you don't know?
I, while it doesn't overtly state in the synopsis, I believe that you are correct. I believe that that was a bartender, rather. And the reason I say that is I, I'm trying to recall from the, the incident notes or the report that when this individual had initially left. the report, that when this individual had initially left the property, um, indicating that they were gonna return with what was interpreted to be a firearm, um, that the doors were locked at that time after all the patrons had been directed to leave, and then I believe when that individual did in fact return a few minutes later, that a bartender contacted law enforcement who, who were able to respond and make contact with that individual.
So there's no weapons at the bar, but a threat of he's gonna come back with-
Correct.
And, uh, the bar took appropriate measures by asking the patrons to leave and shutting down so that he couldn't come back and do anything. Would you say that's correct?
I, I think in that incident that that was a, a, a good measured response by the bartender to have any other patrons leave and to secure the premises and, and contact law enforcement.
And in fact, after, uh, the, when the officers arrived, the actual person was arrested for driving back to the bar intoxicated.
That is correct. I believe that, that, that was kind of sort of the crux of the, the turnout there was, was, um, an impaired driving offense.
Now, we're gonna go back to October 17th, this is an individual who was outside the bar drinking, is that correct?
Yes.
You have an incident time of 10:07 AM, is that correct?
That's what it says on here.
10:07 AM, Rock's Place isn't even open, is that correct?
I'm not sure what their hours are, but I would believe that that's likely, uh, a typo in there. I would have to confer with the actual CAD notes or the dispatch notes. And we could confirm that way, if needed.
Now, on, a month before that, about a year and a half ago, uh, there was another fight complaint, is that correct?
Uh, you referring to the September 7th incident?
Correct.
Yes.
And in regards to that, that was a bouncer asking, uh, individual who's a, uh, I don't know what, what reason, but to leave the bar?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, an individual had been directed to leave the bar.
An individual didn't comply, so the, the, uh, the bar had hired security or some kind of staff to assist and have this individual leave, is that right?
So according to the, uh, event notes that were in the CAD record, um, the individual tried to regain entrance to the tavern to make contact with, I believe, a girlfriend, if I remember correctly, at which point it was reported that the bouncer, um, grabbed hold of this individual around the neck or by the head and tried to force them to the ground, which, which then, uh, the, the, this individual who was being prohibited entrance then struck the bouncer, that was their response. So officers took, took that, uh, the action that they did with the issuance of two municipal citations.
And so, basically, the individual was asked to leave, he left and then tried to re-enter the bar?
Yes.
As an 817, uh, this is a incident in which, uh, the officers respond, uh, because the individual was asked to leave, is that correct? Or individuals were asked to leave?
So, I, I don't believe that the officers were summoned because someone was asked to leave. I believe that they were summoned, um, afterward, so there had been a report of a verbal fight with weapons involved, so that there had been an argument. Bar staff, security staff in this case escorted involved individuals outside, but that they came back, um, with additional individuals that had handguns. So I, I, maybe I misunderstood your question, but it sounded like you said that they were, the officers were called because somebody was asked to leave. I, I'm not sure that that was exact-
I wanna rephrase it. The, the incident is about individuals were asked to leave and then they came back with handguns?
Yeah, I believe that that's how that incident began, yes, is that some incidents were directed to leave the tavern and they had returned with, I guess what, one could term reinforcements or, and, and potential weapons.
And then the officers were contacted?
And the, and officers were contacted.
The same as on August 15th, is a individual who was told to leave the premises and, uh, came back with a gun and so it, or came back into the bar and the bartender called police, and while she was on the phone with police, apparently he brandished a weapon.
Yes, that's what the case notes indicated.
So it looks like a lot of these are asking anybody who causes a problem to leave the bar or you're done, kick, or kicks them out, is that correct?
Uh, I, I guess I'd, I, in, in these incidents, the last few that we've read, it looks like people were asked to leave.
I'm gonna go to July 21st.
Okay.
This is a fight that, by the time the officers got there, uh, was only, was already done, but it was about a female who had been punched outside?
Yes.
Uh, May 20, uh, May 25th, was this outside?
I don't rec, uh, so while the synopsis doesn't necessarily say that, I don't recall from the, from the CAD notes if this was inside or outside. I, I, I don't recall.
On May 18th, uh, this was the incident that was outside, is that right?
Yes, yelling and screaming outside.
April 7th, was the incident outside?
Yes, fighting in the parking lot.
Uh, but March 15th was one that was inside the bar, is that right?
That is correct.
And was that, was that, did the, uh, bartender or someone in the bar call?
I believe the individual that called, if I remember the case, uh, or the incident report correctly, was the victim in this incident. I do not believe we received a call from the bar. Um, I would have to double-check the, the incident report, but I believe that the victim, eh, eh, at least he was a caller. Do I know if there were more than one, I, I'm not sure. I don't recall.
And we, there's only two left, but I'm-
Okay.
-gonna go at this point. It looks like back in January, uh, and through most of 2019, Rock's Place had, uh, security, as I'm looking here, it's like, see, security guards, uh, and for anything to happen on weekends or, I'm gonna say bouncers or security guards, is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure exactly when their security staff are, were there or are there. Um, I guess I, I don't know that specifically. I am aware that it has been a, a practice for, uh, for Rock's Place to have some employees on staff, or either, either that or contract with a security staff, uh, outfit, um, to, to provide that, that oversight.
And that's always helpful if he contracts out to, uh, outside security force to be present, uh, so that way individuals don't get rowdy, I'll say.
Um, I, I guess I, I, I would have, it, it depends. I mean, I think what we've seen in some of these calls, some of the security staff have been involved, um, and have, you know, received, been on the receiving end of enforcement action. Um, we've had security staff that, um, according to video surveillance at least, seem to have been observing a confrontation in a parking lot, and we haven't received a call on that. That would be as recent as the March 4th incident. I think we've, we've seen, um, you know, some security staff that, uh-
Did March 4th, did they have security there?
I might be missthinking that.
Cause that doesn't say that in this-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that, that would be the, uh, you're, you're correct, that would be the, um, the January 12th incident, I believe.
And there's only one time-
No, no, I'm sorry, the February 20th, February 20th of this, of this year.
And only one time was as any security, uh, personnel has been given a citation, is that correct for there?
Uh, that, that I know of, in this timeframe.
And, that you know of, and then you compiled this report?
So I did not compile this report.
In this compiled report, there's only one incident where a security guard was given a citation, is that right?
Yep, to my knowledge, that's, that's correct.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Attorney Alfonso, do you wish to have redirect?
Yes, I, I-
Go ahead.
Captain Beaton?
Yes.
With regard to the point system, does, as part of the point system, does the Police Department have any policy that you're aware of? That in, in establishment will not be assessed points if it is report, if the event is reported by staff?
That is correct.
And, um, what's, what's the reason behind that?
We want to encourage cooperation from licensed establishments in reporting these incidents in a timely manner, so we hear about them from the establishment so we can take appropriate enforcement action and not hear about these incidents either after the fact or from, um, individuals that, um, we don't have the opportunity to interview or maybe get information from, um, before these incidents might escalate into a potential physical altercation or an altercation involving weapons.
And then, um, Attorney Swakis was asking you, um, about walkthroughs. Um, to be clear, are walkthroughs noted on the synopsis?
So there were, there were at least two of the incidents that indicated officers were on foot patrol in that area, walking, um, when, when their attention was directed to whatever incident it was that was being documented.
Okay, so Attorney Swakis, uh, indicated to you that a bar can ask for a walk-through. What is a walk-through versus a foot patrol?
So that would be when officers would, would actually get out of their vehicles, come in, come inside, maybe walk through the bar, like inside the establishment. They, they could do a number of things. They could say hello, they could greet the bartender, uh, we would encourage them to establish a relationship with, um, licensed establishments and become familiar with the staff that are working so as to foster a greater spirit of cooperation, um, with those establishments.
And, um, so while the city has a policy that it doesn't assess points if the tavern or its employees call, um, there are a number of, um, matters on the synopsis where employees did not call, but points yet still weren't assessed.
That's correct.
Thank you, I have no, no further questions.
Okay. Attorney Swakis, do you wish to have recross?
Just one, cause I can go, you indicate there is a policy that there'll be no point that said if-
A staff calls in regards to a fight? Yes, that's, that's a practice at the Police Department that I believe Lieutenant Felder has communicated also to all of the, uh, the licensed establishments.
On March 4th, it appears one of the reporting parties may have been a bar, but the police employee could have called sooner. Rock's Place was assessed 50 points, is that correct?
It was assessed 50 points.
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One follow-up.
Redirect, go ahead.
Um, that policy regarding, um, not being assessed points, um, does that apply, um, under the policy if the event has gone on for some time and then eventually they call?
We would like to see a timely response, um, according to that practice.
So I guess, according to your-
So we can take effective action.
I guess according to your practice, it has to be what the department considers a timely call.
So while I don't have exact verbiage for you, um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Recross on that at all, no? Okay. Um, committee members, do you have any questions for Captain Beaton? If not, Attorney Miller, do you have any questions for Captain Beaton?
I do not.
Thank you, then, uh, Captain Beaton, you can step down and we'll call the next witness.
Chair Rasmussen, would we be able to take a little break?
Sure.
For our court reporter and just to-
Certainly, yep, if you wanna take-
Thank you.
Maybe-
Five minutes.
Five minutes and, yep, perfect.